This is where Dr. Hamud Al-Siwi and the Brooklyn, uh, the Bronx Muslim Center are. It is an honor to have him provide today's invocation as he is not only an active member of the congregation, but of the broader community where he is beloved by his friends and neighbors and shares his passion for learning and teaching. Dr. Al-Siwi’s family has played a key role in his success. His role as a father, grandfather, and husband have strengthened his convictions and given more meaning to his life’s purpose. Actually, I went to school with his children, too. Dr. Al-Siwi, thank you for taking the time to join us today and sharing your uplifting message with us all. With that, I make a motion for unanimous consent to spread the invocation in full upon the record.
Thank you. Councilmember Velazquez will now hear the adoption of the minutes by Councilmember Robert Holden.
I make a motion that the minutes of the stated meeting of April 11, 2023 be adopted as printed.
Thank you. Councilmember Holden will now hear messages and papers from the mayor.
M-140, city debt and reserves.
Received orders printed and filed.
M-141 through M-148, various budget documents.
Finance.
Pre-considered M-149 through pre-considered M-152, TLC appointments.
Rules, privileges, and elections.
Communications from city, county, and borough offices.
Ms. 153 and 154, budget modifications.
Finance.
Petitions and communications.
None.
Land use call-ups.
None.
Thank you. We’ll now hear from communication from Speaker Adrian Adams.
Thank you, Majority Leader, and good afternoon, everyone. I want to begin today by addressing the killing of Jordan Neely. Jordan Neely stepped onto the train that day, hungry, stressed, tired, and probably in emotional distress. Due to possible fear and the lack of a thoughtful alternative and very poor judgment, Jordan was subjected to violence by a fellow subway rider, Daniel Penny, who took his life. Jordan should be alive today. No one deserves what he was subjected to on that train. The fact that Daniel Penny was not charged after killing Jordan stands in stark contrast to the way that other New Yorkers, especially people of color, are treated and certainly would have been treated. There must be accountability for Jordan’s killing at the hands of another person. We have to be honest about Jordan’s life being devalued because he was a black man, and that just doesn’t happen to apply to his being killed, but also how authorities responded, how the media has covered his killing, and how the discussions of his killing have proceeded. It also applies to his not receiving adequate care and support before he ever stepped onto that train. This should be a moment of reflection for all of us about the systemic racism and a call to action to change the inequities that leave so many New Yorkers and communities without safety and without the access to care, opportunity, and resources for health and success. This may be about mental health, but it’s about much, much more, and the investments we make in the people of our city are critical. That’s why we can’t afford a budget that fails to invest in the essential services our communities and New Yorkers have been denied again and again. What does it say about us? That instead of investing in what people need, we allow the response to be violence? What does it say to us as human beings to witness such casual acts of brutal violence time and time again? What will this tragedy do to the witnesses of a murder on a subway train? Who will monitor the long-term trauma and PTSD that this death has surely caused to these riders? This cannot be our norm. This doesn’t have to be our reality. We can build a city and society that meets the needs of all people. As a government, it must be our priority to bolster the infrastructure that delivers housing, mental health care, food assistance, and economic opportunity. That is what Jordan and so many New Yorkers need and deserve. The council is fighting for a city budget that does not deny the people of our city the chance to live in health, safety, and dignity. We’re pushing and calling for the administration to join us in delivering on this for New Yorkers. Over the past year and a half, our historic Women Majority Council has worked hard to advance the health, safety, and well-being of women and families across New York City. We’ve enacted groundbreaking legislation to protect abortion rights, address maternal health disparities, increase access to affordable childcare, and advance economic opportunities and pay equity. Inside the council, we’ve also sought to empower women’s leadership and accommodate working parents by opening a new lactation room at City Hall, improving, woo, improving our EEO policies, and requiring anti-discrimination training for every employee. In recognition of the progress we’ve made for New Yorkers and our own staff, in April, the council was selected as a finalist in Crane’s New York Business’s 2023 Women of Influence Awards under the Women Forward Workplace category. Yes. And now, I’m so proud to announce that our council has won Crane’s Women Forward Workplace Award. Our council, first ever. I want to thank the co-chair of our Women’s Caucus, Councilmember Amanda Farias, for attending yesterday’s luncheon and accepting the award on behalf of all of us, the New York City Council. We’ve done so much to improve the lives of women in our city, and we’re just getting started. Our New York City Government Hiring Halls, which we’re hosting in partnership with the administration to recruit New Yorkers for city government jobs, are continuing to take place throughout the five boroughs. I recently had the opportunity to visit a hiring hall at York College in my own district, and I was so impressed with the enthusiasm and drive of our neighbors. Earlier this week, we held a hiring hall at Bronx Works, Batance’s Community Center, and Deputy Speaker Ayala’s district, and today, there was another hiring hall at the Gerard Carter Center in Councilmember Hanks’s district on Staten Island. As we continue to bring these events directly to our neighborhoods, I urge all New Yorkers looking for opportunities to join the city’s workforce to check them out. Last night, most of you all weren’t here, but we had a time last night in these chambers because we packed the doors, from the door to the floor to the balcony, with members of the Divine Nine, Black Letter Greek Organizations, for the council’s first-ever Pan-Hellenic Day. I want to thank Councilmember Nantasha Williams, Majority Whip Silvina Brooks-Powers, Councilmember Amanda Farias, and Councilmember Kevin Riley for co-hosting a wonderful celebration to contribute and to highlight and contribute, uh, to highlight the contributions and impact of the Divine Nine sororities and fraternities. Yesterday was National Small Business Day. Our local small businesses are the backbones of our communities. It’s important that we continue to shop local and support our neighborhood small businesses. Happy National Small Business Day. May 10th to May 16th is National Mental Health Awareness Week. It is critical that we recognize and act to address the mental health crisis facing our city to ensure that all New Yorkers receive the appropriate care they need to succeed. Last week, the council held a hearing on our mental health roadmap, filled with community-based and preventative mental health solutions. This body will advance evidence-based holistic solutions to improve mental health outcomes in our city. Next Tuesday, get ready, May 18th, get ready, is Haitian Flag Day. I don’t hear the Haitians in the room. Thursday. That’s better. We join our Haitian community throughout New York City to celebrate the culture and heritage of Haiti, the first country in the Western Hemisphere to gain independence from colonial rule. Sappasse!
Sappasse!
I come from Haiti, South Carolina.
So does Eric Botcher.
May 19th, colleagues, is the birthday of Malcolm X, a revolutionary civil rights leader who has fought fiercely to advance the rights and welfare of our communities. This Sunday, though, is one of my personal favorite holidays. It’s Mother’s Day! And as the first mother and grandmother to serve as speaker, this holiday is especially meaningful to me and all of the mothers, daughters, mother figures, and mothers-to-be in this great council. It is also a special day for me because my youngest granddaughter was just born earlier this week. Kayamani! To all of the mothers and grandmothers here who are the heart of our, uh, heart and soul of our families and our communities and this city, I want to wish you and all New Yorkers a very happy Mother’s Day, moms. Lastly, please join me in wishing a happy belated birthday to our colleague, Councilmember Eric Botcher. And we also owe a happy belated birthday to our very own photographer, John, who’s in the front of the room. We appreciate you so much, John. Happy belated. I hope you had a great birthday, Eric and John. Now, let’s move on to our stated agenda. First, we’ll vote on the following finance items. A transparency resolution approving new designations and changes of certain organizations receiving funding in the expense budget. A pre-considered resolution amending a previously granted tax exemption for one building in the Lower East Side in Councilmember Rivera’s district. Two pre-considered resolutions to authorize Article 11 exemptions for two buildings in Bedford-Stuyvesant and Councilmember Osay’s district. A pre-considered resolution to authorize an Article 11 exemption for two buildings in Corona in Councilmember Moya’s district. A pre-considered resolution to authorize an Article 11 exemption for one building in Bushwick in Councilmember Nurse’s district. And a pre-considered resolution to authorize an Article 5 exemption for one building in Kipps Bay in Councilmember Rivera’s district. Next, we’ll vote on the following land use items. 23-10 Queens Plaza South will facilitate the enlargement of an existing four-story building, which will result in a 26-story commercial building that will include office, retail, and community facility uses in Councilmember One’s district. 2560 Boston Road rezoning will facilitate a new nine-story mixed-use development, including approximately 333 affordable housing units, a 15,000-square-feet supermarket, and community facility space in Councilmember Velazquez’s district. And the Coordinated Street Furniture Franchise Agreement, a Department of Transportation request for the council’s support in amending and extending the current 20-year agreement to a 25-year term with franchise JC DeColle to facilitate the expansion of bus shelters and automated public toilet installation citywide. Next, we will vote on the following pieces of legislation. First, we’ll vote on Resolution 129, sponsored by Councilmember Eric Botcher, which calls on the Department of Education to provide bicycle safety instruction in public schools. Thank you to our staff, Jan Atwell. Next, we will vote on Resolution 156A, sponsored by Councilmember Carlina Rivera, which calls on the New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign the Treatment Not Jails Act. The state legislation would expand eligibility for court-involved individuals to receive treatment for mental illness and substance abuse rather than be sent further into a criminal justice system that is not adequately equipped to address their underlying health-related issues. We thank our staff members Jeremy Whiteman and Natalie Melzer. Next, we will vote on the following pieces of legislation coming out of the Housing and Buildings Committee, sponsored by Chair Pirina Sanchez. Introduction 434A will expand the Heat Centers Program, which was established in 2020 as an additional tool for enforcing the Housing Maintenance Code. Under the Heat Centers Program, the Department of Housing Preservation and Development selects 50 multifamily buildings aimed at targeting the worst offenders to install heat sensors in the living room of every apartment in the, in the selected buildings. The devices help monitor indoor temperatures to ensure that property owners are in compliance with the Housing Maintenance Code. This legislation builds upon the existing heat sensors program by expanding the number of participating buildings selected, improving notice to tenants, and increasing HPD’s inspection requirements. And Introduction 875B will amend the city’s administrative code, the city’s plant, uh, plumbing code, the New York City Building Code, the New York City Mechanical Code, and the New York City Fuel/Gas Code to make technical corrections, clarifications, and updates. Thank you to our staff, Audrey Son. Next, Introduction 583A, sponsored by Public Advocate Jomani Williams, will increase penalties for violations issued by the Department of Housing Preservation and Development and requires HPD to maintain a certification of correction watch list. Any listed landlord on this list would be prohibited from certifying correction of violations in multiple dwellings unless HPD has attempted at least two re-inspections, excuse me, or those violations are excluded from the calculations that identify buildings on the watch list. We thank our staff, Audrey Son. Next, Introduction 644, sponsored by Councilmember Nantasha Williams, would require the Department of Education to post information on its website to inform New Yorkers on how to establish after-school programs. Thank you to our staff, Mark Chen and Nadia Jean-François. Introduction 868, sponsored by Councilmember Athia Stevens, would require the DOE to report annually on the number of students in each school building that provides a District 75 program and the criteria that the DOE uses to determine where D-75 programs are established. Thank you to staff members Brenda McKinney and Nadia Jean-François. And Introduction 725A, sponsored by Councilmember Linda Lee, would require the DOE to create a centralized place on its website to allow schools to list their surplus school supplies for other schools to claim. Thank you staffers, Nell Beekman and Nadia Jean-François. Next, we will vote on Introduction 209A, sponsored by Councilmember Shawna Abreu, that would amend the New York City Human Rights Law to prohibit discrimination based on an individual’s height or weight in employment, housing, and public accommodations. This bill would allow employers to consider height or weight in employment decisions when federal, state, or local laws or regulations require it. The Commission on Human Rights could also permit consideration of height or weight should they prevent a person from performing the essential requisites of a job and no alternative is available, or these criteria are reasonably necessary for normal business operations. The bill would also permit similar exemptions for operators or providers of public accommodations. Thank you to staff, Jay Ashri Ganapi, William Diore, Tanvir Singh, Rachel Codero, and David Seitzer. Finally, we will vote on several bills sponsored by our Criminal Justice Committee Chair, Councilmember Carlina Rivera, that would help our city move towards lowering our jail population as we approach the legal deadline of 2027 to close Rikers and transition to a borough-based jail system. It’s abundantly clear that Rikers is undermining public safety for New York City. It exposes everyone there, the staff and people who are detained, to violence and trauma, and exacerbates existing challenges for people to successfully re-enter their communities. We cannot allow Rikers to remain open past this legally mandated deadline, and the city must take active steps to ensure we move forward in a timely fashion. Today’s legislation is another step to help address these issues in our jail system and get us to an effective one. Introduction 589A would require the Department of Correction and Consultation with relevant agencies to submit an annual report on incarcerated pregnant individuals’ medical care and outcomes. This report includes specific information on the number of pregnant persons in custody, prenatal and postnatal care, and maternal mortality data. Introduction 806A would establish a comprehensive review process to assess whether people being detained ahead of trial can have their cases resolved or be safely released. The legislation would help facilitate reducing unnecessary pre-trial detention that can lower the excessively high jail population and ensure the successful closure of Rikers. Thank you to our staff members Jeremy Whiteman and Natali, and Natalie Melzer. Thank you all for your attention. Now I turn it back into the hands of our Majority Leader.
Thank you. Speaker Adams will now move into the discussion of general orders. We will begin with Councilmember Velazquez.
One of the top concerns regarding housing surrounds the affordability of units and their compatibility with the average median income. The project at Boston Road is no different. I’m happy to share that the applicant team is committed to pursuing 100%. That’s correct, 100% affordable HPD’s term sheet. This means incomes are capped at 90% of AMI, with most units targeting incomes below the max threshold. By utilizing HPD’s Mix and Match Program, families with incomes of all ranges can reside in this new complex. To be clear, most units are below 90% of AMI, including 20% for households earning between $37,000 to $53,000, which is 40% AMI, 25% for households earning between $47,000 and $67,000, and 40% for households earning between $82,000 to $120,000. That means the average public school teacher in New York City who earns $66,000 and healthcare workers earning an average of $69,000 and other occupants can reflect our community, and we will be able to afford these units. There’s no evidence to show that 100% affordable housing development will impact market rates in this neighborhood. In fact, an increase in available units will actually lessen the demand and limit the rates of increased rents. This is a simple case of supply and demand, allowing residents to thrive in the communities they helped build. With 50% of the units being prioritized for the community, we are addressing a desperately needed opportunity for our families. The growing need for our housing in our community is a daily struggle for many, and I know the full board and the public are not against affordable housing in my district. As a community, we must ensure our neighbors have safe, affordable housing that meets their unique needs. I look forward to working with my community as this project unfolds and bringing much-needed housing and commercial and community spaces to benefit everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. We’ll now hear from Councilmember Carlina Rivera.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Today, we will vote on three items of legislation that I am honored to have sponsored. Intro 589 will mandate new reporting requirements on medical care and outcomes for pregnant people who are currently incarcerated. I’ve seen mothers holding their babies on Rikers Island, and their care leading to that point and postpartum should never be in question. This weekend, families across the five boroughs will celebrate yet another Mother’s Day, and I’d like to acknowledge the mothers at Rosie’s who will be excluded. Intro 806 will establish deal population review teams for each borough to identify people in DOC custody whose cases can be resolved or who could be safely released into their community. Streamlined case processing is a critical way the city council can reduce unnecessary, even harmful, jail time imposed on New Yorkers. Detainees at Rikers Island spend an average of 115 days locked up at the jail. Last year, four times the national average, according to a federal monitor report published last month. Population review teams will bring all stakeholders to the table to make expert recommendations to streamline case processing to keep all New Yorkers safe. And Resolution 156, which calls on the state legislature to pass the Treatment Not Jail Act, legislation which will ensure that New Yorkers with disabilities and other health-related challenges are provided the opportunity to obtain treatment and support in their communities. Let me be clear, Rikers Island keeps no one safe. A crucial part of a just transition is reducing New York City’s reliance on criminalization and ensuring that people who don’t belong in jail don’t end up there and instead get the services and care that they need. The city council has the tools we need today to responsibly build a more fair criminal legal system and safer communities. We must center humanity in our actions and follow the data, not the fear. I want to thank all of the staff that helped make this possible. I especially want to thank Isabel Chandler, who has been on my team for many, many years and who worked on this legislation, and I’m so honored and excited to see it through with you, Isabel. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else who’d like to speak on today’s? We have Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you so much. As it gets warmer out, I want to acknowledge that our speaker and our, and this council is thinking about next winter. Introduction 434 on the agenda today will expand the Heat Sensors Program, which was established in 2020, selecting a number of buildings, 50 buildings, with a history of heat and hot water violations to install internet-capable temperature reporting devices that reports to HPD. So there were early successes in this program despite pretty serious implementation challenges, but even just the existence of the program and those that complied and installed the devices saw really meaningful changes and differences for, for the tenants. So I urge my colleagues to join me and vote yes and support a 434 today, and keep your eyes on the prize with me and make sure that, you know, tenants are receiving the heat that they deserve next winter.
Thank you. Councilmember Sanchez, do we have anyone else who’d like to speak on general orders? Okay, in that case, we’ll move to the report of special committees.
None.
Reports of standing committees.
Report of the Committee on Civil and Human Rights, Intro 209A, Appearance-Based Discrimination.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Criminal Justice, Intro 589A, Medical Care for Incarcerated Pregnant People.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Intro 806A, Jail Population Review Program.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Education, Intro 644A, After-School Programs.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Intro 725A, Surplus School Supplies.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Intro 868A, District 75 Schools.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Finance, Pre-Considered Reso 607 Transparency Resolution.
Coupled on general orders.
Pre-considered LU 201 and Reso 626 through pre-considered LU 206 and Reso 631 Property Tax Exemptions.
Coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Housing and Buildings, Intro 434A, Heat Sensors Program.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Intro 583A, HPD Violations.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Intro 875B, New York City Construction Codes.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Land Use, Pre-Considered Reso 625, Street Furniture Franchise.
Coupled on general orders.
LU 184 and Reso 632 and LU 185 and Reso 633, 2560 Boston Road rezoning.
Coupled on general orders.
LU 186 and Reso 634 through LU 188 and Reso 636, 2310 Queens Plaza South.
Coupled on general orders.
LU 189 through LU 191, Paperific rezoning.
Approved with modifications and referred to the City Planning Commission pursuant to Section 197 D of the New York City Charter, and I now ask that the clerk take a roll-call vote on all of the items coupled on today’s general orders calendar.
I vote aye.
Lewis.
Aye on all.
Abreu.
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Today, I am overjoyed that this council will have the chance to take a stand for size freedom, banning discrimination on the basis of height or weight in employment, housing, and public accommodations. Every year, 2 million New Yorkers are affected by size discrimination, and we’ve heard from plenty of them. A luxury brand specialist was sent to the stockroom after giving birth because baby weight didn’t fit the company image. A sales associate took some time off to care for her, for her family and put on a few pounds. She was met with snide remarks and questions about her energy level when trying to re-enter the workforce. A student was made to feel like she didn’t belong, or it was an inconvenience for requesting an accessible desk to take notes during her college lecture class. People with different body types are not only denied jobs and promotions that they deserve, their whole existence has also been denied by a society that has offered no legal remedy for this prejudice until today. With today’s vote, New York City will become the largest municipality in the country and the world with these protections. With this bill passing today, we are going a long way towards changing the culture around weight. I want to especially thank Speaker Adams and her team, including Jeff Baker, Andrea Vasquez, and Jeremy John for their support, as well as Civil and Human Rights Chair Nantasha Williams and committee staff Jayshy Ganapathy and William Diore. And of course, I thank the advocates, who I’ve been working with closely to get this over the finish line, the National Association to Advance Fat Acceptance, RWDSU, The Retail Action Project, Tigress Osborne, Josh Kellerman, Enno Awatoye, Lydia Green, Dr. Gregory Dodell, and everyone who spoke with us about how they’ve been impacted and what this legislation would mean to them. And finally, I have to thank my staff, Jalisa Quigley, Amber Moore, Milo Green Glass, for their work on this historic piece of legislation. I proudly vote aye. Thank you.
Ariola.
Aye on all with the exception of Intros 209, 583, and 806.
Aviles.
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
Um, aye on all with the exception of pre-considered 151. Would note, um, the Brooklyn delegation should be appointing drivers with direct experience to the Taxi and Limousine Commission, and all commissions should include people with direct experience. Thank you.
I vote aye.
Barron.
I vote aye on all except for LU 202 with accompanying Reso 627. I know that’s supposed to be a tax exempt so they can get to affordability, but it doesn’t seem like they started with affordability and have no confidence that they will get there. I vote no on LU 202 and Reso 627. Aye on all the rest.
Thank you. Butcher.
Aye on all.
Brennan.
Aye.
Brewer.
Aye.
Brooks-Powers.
Aye on all.
Caban.
Aye on all with the exception of pre-considered M-151, uh, on which I abstain. Thank you.
I’ll vote no on Introductions 209A, 583A, and 806A, and aye on the rest. I'll vote no on Introductions 209A, 583A, and 806A, and aye on the rest.
De La Rosa.
Aye on all, and congratulations to my colleagues.
Denowitz.
Aye on all.
Farias.
I vote aye on all.
Feliz.
Aye on all.
Gennaro.
Aye.
Gutierrez.
Aye on all with the exception of pre-considered M151, for which I vote no.
Hanif.
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
I vote aye on all except for pre-considered M151, which I vote no. To remain consistent with how I've participated in the Brooklyn delegation on this appointment, the Taxi and Limousine Commission has never had a single driver or former driver commissioner. Removing drivers from the conversation is how we ended up with horrific public policy that artificially inflated the price of medallions and bankrupted drivers and their families, many of whom live in my district. I look forward to having driver representation on the TLC very soon. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to make a clarification on the agenda. We're not voting on the Taxi and Limousine Commission nominees today. We had a hearing on them this week. The messages in papers from the mayor are their submitted nominations, so there'll be potentially an opportunity ahead to vote or comment on them.
Hanks.
Aye.
Holden.
Aye on all with the exception of 209A, 583A, and Intro 806A, which I vote no.
Thank you. Hudson.
Aye on all.
Joseph.
Aye on all.
Kagan.
No on Intro 583A and 806A, and yes on everything else.
Thank you. Krishnan.
Aye on all.
Lee.
Aye on all.
Marte.
Aye.
Milly.
Aye.
Menon.
Aye.
Moya. Councilmember Moya.
I vote aye.
Thank you. Narcisse.
I vote aye.
Nurse.
Aye.
Ose.
I vote aye.
Palladino.
I vote aye on all except for 209, 583, and 806, which I vote no.
Wrestler.
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
I vote aye on all and enthusiastically for Intro 806A, sponsored by Councilmember Rivera. Population review teams are an evidence-based, successful model for us to shorten length of stay, drive down unnecessary incarceration in the city of New York. Rikers Island is a humanitarian disaster, and PRTs have worked well in New York City when they've been applied before. I am excited to see them implemented into local law and implemented at scale. This legislation by Councilmember Rivera is going to make a huge difference in moving us a step closer to the closure of Rikers Island. I want to applaud her personally for her leadership on this bill and enthusiastically support its passage. Thank you.
Richardson, Jordan.
I would like to abstain on pre-considered M151 and to be associated with the remarks of Councilmember Aviles. Aye on all the rest.
Thanks. Just a clarification again. Today, we're not voting on M151. TLC appointees, those are being referred to committee, and we had a hearing on them this last week. There'll be an opportunity ahead to comment and vote on them.
Riley.
Aye.
Rivera.
Congratulations to all of my colleagues. I proudly vote aye.
Salamanca. Sanchez.
Aye on all.
Schulman.
Aye on all.
Stevens.
Aye on all.
Ung.
Aye on all with the exception of Intro 806A, which I abstain.
Thank you. Velazquez.
Aye on all with the exception of 806A, which I abstain.
Vernikov. Juan.
Aye on all.
Yeager.
Aye on all with the exception of Intros 434, 583, and 806. Thank you.
Worelli.
Aye on all except Intros 209, 583, and 806. Thank you.
Adams, excuse me, Powers.
I vote aye.
Speaker Adams.
Now I vote aye.
All items on today's general order. We'll just kind of hold on for one second. Excuse me. Councilmember Moya? Councilmember Moya?
Apologies, just having some trouble with the Zoom link. I just wanted to, I just needed to correct my vote. I was just abstaining on Intro 806.
Thank you. Thank you. All items on today's general order calendar are adopted by a vote of 48/49 in the affirmative, zero negative, and zero abstentions, with the exception of Intro 209A, adopted by a vote of 44 in the affirmative, five negative and zero abstentions. Intro 583A, adopted by a vote of 42 in the affirmative, seven negative and zero abstentions. Intro 806A, adopted by a vote of 39 in the affirmative, seven negative and three abstentions. Land Use Item 202 in Resolution 627, and Introduction 434A, both adopted by a vote of 48 in the affirmative, one negative, zero abstentions. We will now move into the introduction and reading of bills.
All bills have been referred to committees as indicated on today's agenda.
Thank you. We're going to move into the discussion of resolutions. Do we have anyone who would like to speak on today's resolutions? Okay, we'll now have a voice vote on today's resolutions. If you wish to vote against or abstain from either of today's resolutions, please notify the Legislative Documents Unit by email or by approaching the day as before the vote. I'll now read the resolutions into the record. Resolution 129 calls out the New York City Department of Education to carry out instruction in bicycle safety in all New York City schools. All those in favor, please say aye. All opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Resolution 156A calls on the New York State Legislature to pass in the government-assigned the Treatment Not Jail Act, Senate Bill Number 1976A, and Assembly Bill Number 1263A to amend the criminal procedure law, Article 2216 of the Judicial Diversion Law and Order, expand eligibility for treatment for court-involved individuals, and shift the presumption from incarceration to community support. Will all those in favor, please say aye. All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. We'll now move into general discussion. We'll first hear from Councilmember Mercedes Narcisse.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm happy to have the moment, and thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you for the majority. Give me the opportunity. I'm delighted to speak today to recognize May 18, for we're going to celebrate, but May as a Haitian Heritage Month. The impact Haitian Americans in the Big Apple has been tremendous and around United States of America. Right now, the Harvard president by July 1st will be a Haitian young woman by the name of Joseline Gay. If you look at so many universities around the USA, Rice University happened to be Haitian descent. So many elected officials around United States of America, I cannot even count anymore, because every state, every city, you will have Haitian representatives. This week, we have a robust schedule of events planned to showcase and commemorate all that vibrant culture of Haiti has to offer. I invite you to join me and my Haitian-American colleagues, which is Faia Louis, Chi Ose, Rita Joseph. We're all going to be there to receive you next Thursday at Brooklyn Children's Museum for our annual Flag Day celebration. But as I am sure, many of you know severe problems persisted in Haiti. We have a lot of problems. We have gangs control our street. There is severe hunger issues. Deforestation has caused devastating environmental problems. Access to healthcare has not even existed. Education is near to unexistence. It's not even existed anymore. People that get healthcare are the most wealthy one, that go across or travel. It is bad. Haiti, once upon a time, was the pearl of the island. So I hope this celebration can serve as a call for action, to action, for all New Yorkers to support and help our neighbors, which is just a short distance away. But before I go anything, Mr. Majority, can you give me one second? I have to tell you a trivia.
I'll give you one more second.
A trivia about Haiti. About 750 Haitian free men came along the side of colonial troops against the British in Savannah, Georgia in 1779 to force the Louisiana Purchase, which is another one in 1803. Haitian being here, America was able to purchase because of the Haitian fort with the biggest army of the now bullion.
Councilmember, go ahead and close out your remarks, please.
So I just want to say, we're going to celebrate, but I want my brothers and sisters to help me to make sure that we at least help with the planting of trees.
Thank you, Councilmember.
One million trees for Haiti. I love you guys. Thank you. Let's celebrate their history.
Okay, thanks, Councilmember. We're now going to call on Councilmember Ariola. She's got to follow that.
I have to follow.
Will be followed by Councilmember Gennaro.
Today, I'm introing a bill that will greatly improve public safety throughout the city by enhancing communication between the Department of Transportation and the FDNY. Intro 1033 requires the DOT to provide notification to local firehouses before granting approval for open street applications, as well as before initiating bicycle lane projects and major transportation endeavors. By doing so, we ensure that our firehouses are prepared and equipped to face any challenges that may arise due to changes in our transportation landscape. Picture, if you will, a scenario that our brave first responders race against time to reach a blazing inferno, only to find their path blocked or delayed due to sudden street closures, or they are unable to get close to a hydrant due to newly constructed double-widely protected bike lanes. In those precious moments, lives hang in the balance, and we cannot afford to let bureaucracy hinder lifesaving efforts. This bill is our safeguard against such circumstances, ensuring that our firehouses are kept informed and able to respond swiftly and efficiently in any situation. Not only does the bill require the DOT to notify firehouses about any changes to the transportation infrastructure in any given area, it also requires the DOT to consult the FDNY before any changes are made as well. Through these consultations, the Fire Department can share their expertise and insights regarding any potential hazards that might possibly arise from new transportation projects. I understand this legislation may raise concerns about potential delays to DOT plans in the future, but let us remember that the safety of our citizens must always remain our priority. It is certainly important that we continue to improve New York City's infrastructure, but we cannot, under any circumstances, compromise the safety and responsiveness of our firehouses. For this reason, I ask my fellow councilmembers to support this bill, sign on and stand firm in our collective commitment to the well-being of our communities. I'd also like to note that next week is National Police Week, and it is a collaborative effort of many organizations dedicated to honoring America's law enforcement community. Thank you, Majority Speaker.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Councilmember Gennaro, followed by Councilmember Barron.
Thank you, Mr. Leader. I was having a lot of fun listening to Councilmember Narcisse. Wonder if I can give her some time back or whatever. I'm just kind of kidding, although I did enjoy what she had to say. Very passionate and very much more, much more excited than what I have to talk about. I'm going to talk about two resos that are being put forward today. The first, Reso 608 urges the state legislature and the governor to enact legislation that will set up a permanent citywide voluntary buyout program to mitigate flood risks. There already is, there was a small program that did this, but it was limited to two small communities in the whole city, and we have to figure out a way to kind of break the cycle of people being flooded, people being displaced, and having, you know, programs to build them back. And this is part of the future of New York City's resiliency. There is money for this in the Clean Water, Clean Air, Clean Jobs Bond Act that was just passed, Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities Program, and the Safeguarding Tomorrow through Ongoing Risk Mitigation Act. There is money out there. We should do it. I also want to talk a little bit about Reso 605 that's being put forward today. I'm number two on this reso. Councilmember Aviles Charles is waiting to get on here. He can't wait. He can't wait. He can't wait. And so I can't wait either. And so, no, it's good. And so Darlene did it? Okay. Reso 605. Councilmember Aviles is the lead on this. I'm number two, but a call upon the state legislature to pass and government sign some state bill in relation to prohibiting the discharge of any radiological agent into the waters of New York State. That's probably a little broad, because there are some waters that are, you know, naturally that have those kinds of agents in it. But the point is that they're, you know, decommissioning through my aisle now, and the Holtek Corporation bought that, and they should pay the full cost of remediating that plan, including the radioactive discharge. Many of you have read about it. And so I would ask my colleagues to support Reso 605 and 608. Thanks for going over. I mean, thank you for letting me go over.
Thank you. We'll go to Councilmember Barron, followed by Councilmember Joseph.
Thank you very much, my colleagues. I first want to say Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers, especially to my black queen, Inez Barron, the mother of my two sons. I want to say Happy Mother's Day to her, and also to my 100-year-old mother-in-law, Margaret Smith. May she have a happy, happy Mother's Day. I also want to commend Councilmember Ose for his strong stance for justice for Jordan Neely, even in light of a black mayor having a weak response for a white male vigilante choking an innocent black man on the subways. We got a black mayor that first said he'll let the justice system take care of it, which never happens, and then he says it's mental health. Thank you, my colleague. Also want to invite all of you to 125th Street for Malcolm X's celebration, the Black Shining Prince. We shut down 125th Street from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. on the 19th, 12 noon. I hope that all of you can make it, so we can honor our Black Shining Prince, one of the greatest revolutionary leaders we've ever had. Finally, on the 15th of this month, will be the Nakba. Nakba, most of us should understand that the racist Zionist militia in 1948 expelled 750 Palestinians from their land, killed hundreds of women and children, Palestinian women and children, and destroyed 535 cities. The Palestinians had to be forced onto the West Bank and in the Gaza Strip, and they established the settler state of Israel on established the settler state of Israel on Palestinian territory. And I would like for us to acknowledge and have their right to return from these refugee camps to their homes where Israel is now a state. I know you wanna cut me real quick now, but you're gonna give me a few minutes, just like you did others.
I'll give you the same couple of seconds I gave everyone else.
It wasn't a couple of seconds, that was pretty long there, so.
She got too much time.
Soon you heard the state of Israel, I saw that gavel coming up. But anyway, we need to honor.
Thanks, Councilmember.
And commend that, that was a catastrophic time in history that we should all note.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Councilmember Joseph, Councilmember Hanif, Councilmember Ose.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I am honored today as a proud Haitian American during Haitian Heritage Month. Haiti has a rich cultural heritage, and as Haitian Americans, we carry that heritage with us wherever we go. We are people, we are people of resilience, perseverance, and pride. We have contributed greatly to the fabric of American society, from our music, dance, to our food, language. Haitian culture is diverse and vibrant. Our history is one of triumph over adversity, from the Haitian Revolution to our continued struggles. This month, let us celebrate the richness of our heritage, honor the sacrifices of our ancestors, and renew our commitment to creating a better future for ourselves, our children and future generations. Thank you so much, colleagues, and let us continue to celebrate Haitian Heritage Month with pride and joy. Thank you, Majority.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Councilmember Hanif, followed by Councilmember Ose, Councilmember Nurse.
Thank you. Jordan Neely should be alive. Thank you to the BLAC for bringing us together this afternoon to recommit ourselves to black New Yorkers and adjust budget that ensures dignity. I urge this administration to make real commitments to health-centered, not law enforcement-centered responses to mental health crises. I want to uplift the progressive caucus's budget demand to fully fund IMT, ACT, FACT, and HEAT teams. Today, I'm introducing Intro 1035 alongside Criminal Justice Chair Rivera, Councilmembers Ose, Narcisse, and Batra, and public advocate Williams. Since 2021, at least nine people have died of overdoses on Rikers. Narcan is extremely effective in reversing opioid overdoses, and we must ensure it is used when needed. Intro 1035 would require DOC officers to be trained on how to use Narcan, carry down their person, and use it appropriately when someone is experiencing an overdose. The bill also requires the DOC to offer training to people who are incarcerated. I encourage my colleagues to sign on. I also want to use this opportunity to condemn Executive Order 402, which the mayor signed last night to suspend parts of the city's right-to-shelter law. This sets an extremely dangerous precedent and puts recent arrivals at immediate risk. The order allows families with children to be housed in congregate settings, which is a wholly unacceptable arrangement. I urge my colleagues to join together as a council in fighting against this harmful decision. The laws that we make in this chamber exist for a reason. We cannot let the mayor unilaterally weaken the law that is the tent pole of our social safety net. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Councilmember Ose, followed by Councilmember Nurse, followed by Councilmember Caban.
Today, I'll speak on the tragic killing of Jordan Neely, troubling reactions from some parts of our city, and what I feel is a misguided narrative from others. I want to start by, again, commending Speaker Adams, who seems to be one of the only elected officials in leadership in this state with damn sense, and my colleagues in this body for condemning this act of violence. Your statements were strong and thoughtful and necessary, and I thank you. But other New Yorkers are missing the mark. We have a reactionary segment saying that they are fed up with people experiencing mental health crises, that they don't fault Daniel Penny for the killing. I've even seen him called a hero. On the other hand, we have a well-meaning side that sees this death as a tragic outcome of New York's failure to fully invest in housing, mental health care, and homeless services. But I have to stress something in no uncertain terms. Jordan Neely did not die of a mental illness episode, he died of a chokehold. Jordan Neely was not killed by homelessness, he was killed by another passenger. There are deep systemic issues we need to address. Folks across the political spectrum have been calling and working for systemic overhaul for years, but we can't accidentally stumble into victim blaming, sweeping this case in with the broader crisis facing our New York City. If a person suffering from depression was murdered, we would condemn the murder before we call for more antidepressants. If a person with a broken leg was murdered, we would condemn the murder before we call for more casts. That killing is wrong has to be a shared fundamental value. Condemning murder has to be a universal response. Anything short of unanimous agreement represents a moral decline in New York that we cannot accept. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Councilmember Nurse, followed by Councilmember Caban, followed by Councilmember Gutierrez.
Thank you. I just want to start by expressing my condolences to the family members of victims of a really bad fire in my district. We had a mother who was pregnant who didn't make it out. There were four children, one of which died on the way to the hospital, another who was in a coma, and two others we're still waiting to hear from. So I just wanted to express my condolences to the family, and thank you to Councilmember Barron's office and team for being supportive, and other members who have reached out. Today, I'm introducing a legislative package to crack down on a terrible but daily occurrence in our city, illegal evictions. Unlawful evictions often fly under the radar. They are the evictions we don't see in housing court. They are often underreported, unenforced, and therefore go unchecked. Law enforcement often favors landlords and makes it extremely difficult and unlikely that tenants will get back into their homes, while property owners who break the law continue to get away with lockouts and increased homelessness. This legislative package creates strong disincentives and real tangible consequences that will make landlords think twice before breaking the law and illegally evicting tenants in the first place. Taken together, these bills will increase the financial penalties for illegal evictions, ban anyone found guilty from accessing abatements, subsidies, or exemptions for five years, mandate low-income housing set aside for those owners who want to correct an unlawful eviction violation, expand the city's harassment code to include unlawful evictions in order to place a building into the city's certificate of no harassment program, and finally make it easier for tenants to access housing courts and hold landlords that break the law accountable. These are crucial bills that I believe will prevent landlords from negating our legal housing system and illegally locking out and evicting people. I'm looking forward to talking with you all. I would love your support and for you to sign on so we can stem the tide of evictions in the city and keep people in their homes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Councilmember Caban, followed by Councilmember Gutierrez, followed by Councilmember Brooks Powers.
Thank you. I'd like to take a couple of minutes to talk about how we talk about poverty and public safety. The way we talk about it has major consequences, because the hard truth is, it wasn't just one person who killed Jordan Neely. There are powerful elected officials and media outlets like the New York Post that have told us that people like Jordan are threats to be contained by force rather than precious human lives worthy of care, compassion, and community. And the way we think, talk, produce media about our neighbors living in abject poverty, the policies we have in place are also what condemned Jordan Neely to death. And so, let's clear this up. If someone is starving, if they're homeless and they're shouting about it near me, I am not the one in danger, they are. That is why it was so startling to see the mayor's inexcusable refusal to condemn vigilante murder on black folks living in poverty, and why it was so inspiring in contrast with our speaker's clear-eyed, unapologetic message against racist killing, so thank you. It really calls into question what people mean by public safety. The way the mayor and the governor talk, only Jordan's fellow passengers count as the public and needed to be kept safe from him. When we talk about public safety, we need to mean everybody. Jordan Neely was a member of the public as well. He deserves safety as well, and vigilante murder is a threat to public safety. It's mind-boggling that that even needs to be said. Nothing anyone can do can bring him back. The best we can do now is make the investments necessary to save the next Jordan Neely and the one after that. People experiencing homelessness, mental illness, hunger, and frustration need and deserve compassion and trauma-informed care. That can't just be emergency catchment. Jordan went to treatment voluntarily nearly 20 times, and so instead, it's clear that we need deep investment in targeted case management, assertive community treatment, and supportive housing for which there are huge weightless. And that's why it's imperative that we not only defeat the mayor's budget cuts, but we actually allocate new funding into mental health, affordable housing, and true public safety. And to conclude, let's not just offer condolences or words of outrage, let's put our money where our mouth is. That's how we save lives, that's how we honor the dead, and that's how we come closest to achieving justice for Jordan Neely. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Councilmember Gutierrez, Councilmember Brooks Powers, Councilmember Aviles, Councilmember Brewer, and finally, Councilmember Russler.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Before I give my remarks on my two bills, I just wanted to really uplift the speaker and her leadership in being very unapologetic in the realities of all the dynamics that face New Yorkers who are in desperate need of help, especially our black New Yorkers, especially black men who are often targeted, who do not live safely in a city where public safety is at the focus and at the core of so much of our conversations, and stand in solidarity with all the New Yorkers who have been peacefully demonstrating and seeking justice for his life. And I implore all of our colleagues here at the council to continue to push for justice and demand that we do better as a city, we invest, and we prevent another death like that of Jordan Neely, another murder like that of Jordan Neely. Today, I'm introducing two bills, one that are both deeply personal for me. One is the Newborn Navigator Act that recognizes how overwhelming the period after childbirth is and provides easy and expanded access to resources that new parents need, from SNAP and WIC benefits to postpartum resources. This bill's inception was in conjunction with my longtime district director and friend, Angelica Colon, shout out, who herself is a mother of two and knows firsthand how challenging these critical resources are. This bill would ensure that resources are directly delivered to new parents and build a one-stop-shop online resource available in 10 designated citywide languages. And thank you to Councilmember Narcisse for supporting this bill alongside me. And just as vital as providing access to people that choose to have a child, we need to expand access to those that don't want to. And that's why I'm also introducing Resolution 609 in support of a bill in the state that requires CUNY and SUNY institutions to have vending machines with emergency contraception, commonly known as Plan B. This was a project developed directly from student advocates who are involved in the reproductive justice fight, and I couldn't be more excited to support it alongside my colleagues, Councilmembers Dinowitz and Councilmember Rivera. With this resolution, the council, a historic female majority body, is recognizing the threats to women's healthcare across the city and affirming that we will unapologetically expand access to emergency contraception and desegregize the essential part of healthcare. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Councilmember Brooks Powers.
First, I'd like to associate myself with the remarks by the speaker and my colleagues surrounding the untimely murder of Jordan Neely. My thoughts and prayers go out to his family and loved ones. I'm excited to join as a co-prime sponsor on Introduction 1032, which would require the Department of Sanitation to remove abandoned vehicles within three days of notice. In my district, there are too many derelict vehicles that slowly rot on our streets for long periods of time. They become an eyesore and a safety hazard for our community members. This bill would hold the administration accountable for removing these vehicles more quickly and will help clear our communities of unnecessary debris. I thank Councilmember Abreu for leading the way on this issue, and I hope everyone will sign on to this important piece of legislation. I also am excited to join as a co-prime sponsor on Resolution Number 618, which calls on the MTA to adopt federally recommended measures to ensure on-time Accessa Ride service and ADA compliance. Accessa Ride is supposed to be an alternative for those who cannot access the subway, an affordable, reliable option for riders with a disability or elderly riders. But Accessa Ride has too often failed New Yorkers. On too many occasions, they've waited hours after a scheduled pickup from work, or school, or a friend's place before an Accessa Ride van arrives. That's why the Department of Justice investigated this program. They found that Accessa Ride fails to provide service that is comparable to the level provided to individuals without disabilities. I know the MTA has focused efforts on improving Accessa Ride, and I acknowledge recent improvements in service and customer satisfaction, but I also note that the city will be picking up a larger share of the bill to fund parent transit in the coming years. It is MTA's responsibility to ensure Accessa Ride promises dignity to those New Yorkers who rely on it. I thank Councilmember Lee for her work on this resolution, and I look forward to advancing it in my committee. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Councilmember Aviles.
Thank you. As a daughter of Puerto Rico, I have seen firsthand the devastating harm vulture funds, which are run by billion-dollar hedge fund companies, have had on people living on the island, what is often called the Six Borough. Debt is big business. We know this with student loans and medical debt. Vulture funds crush struggling countries and communities by making governments gut essential services, pulverize minimum wage standards. In Puerto Rico, the minimum wage was lower to $4.25 an hour. And bench pensions for retirees who may desperately need those resources. The people of Puerto Rico, of Greece, and many countries in South America have had to endure the hardship of severe recessions and crushing austerity measures, while vulture fund companies make profit hand over fist. This is not accidental, but very much by design. We can and must stop this. I'm proud to stand in support of Bills 5623 and 5290, and that this is not a game campaigns effort to end these crimes against people by creating a framework for restructuring unsustainable debt and strengthening the existing laws to prevent predatory financial practices. I ask my colleagues to support Resolution 604 being introduced today. We must audit the debt in Puerto Rico, dissolve the unelected, undemocratic fiscal control board comprised of some of the very vulture fund reps that created the problem to begin with. Que viva Puerto Rico libre. And lastly, I would also like to take a moment to hold space for Jordan Neely, who was murdered on a New York City subway. Thank you, Speaker, for your courageous leadership and connecting all the dots to this situation and how it directly ties to the budget.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Councilmember Kell Brewer, followed by Councilmember Russler.
Thank you very much. I just want to mention that today at 5:30 in this room, our desks will be occupied by teens. The Y runs Teens Take the City, which I have sponsored for many years. They will become council members, and they do a great job, and I hope you can join us. Second, I know we're all concerned about housing temporarily for those who are asylum seekers. I believe strongly in right to shelter. I am contacting all the faith-based institutions in my district, asking them to house individuals, and I just hope others do the same. If anyone needs more information, I know you can let the mayor's office know or us know, it is certainly something that people have to participate in, I believe. And I do want to thank the speaker for her courageous stand regarding Mr. Neely and what I would consider a murder in his case, and hope that this does not ever happen again. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll finally hear from Councilmember Russler.
Thank you so much, Majority Leader. Firstly, I want to congratulate the speaker on the housing package. Exciting to see some progress there and the broad support from across the chamber. You know, yesterday, the mayor spoke about the death of Jordan Neely, and he said, "Our work starts with acknowledging that we must reverse the effects of decades of disinvestment in housing, healthcare, and social services." And yet, time and again, we have experienced four rounds of exceptional, unnecessary budget cuts to housing, healthcare, and social services by him. We cannot accept it. We must fight back. If we are to honor the death, the murder of Jordan Neely at the hands of a vigilante on our subway, the town square of the city of New York, then we must double down and deepen our investments in housing, healthcare, and social services. I want to thank the speaker for her leadership on this issue, and many of my colleagues, especially Councilmember Ose, for being so eloquent and outspoken in light of this tragic murder. I also just want to call attention to Intro 1044, a bill that I'm proud to have introduced today with Councilmembers Stevens and Williams and Gutierrez. When a council member is expelled from this body, they should not be subsidized in their effort to return to it with taxpayer matching funds. If we, oh, excuse me, I thanked Councilmember Gutierrez, when I meant to thank Shaana Hanif. Thank you, Councilmember Hanif, for cosponsoring this, I apologize. But when a council member is expelled from the city council, they should not be permitted to run again for office with taxpayer resources. they should not be permitted to run again for office with taxpayer resources incentivizing it. We should have real consequences and accountability when people misuse taxpayer resources, abuse their staff, just as the former council member from the Northeast Bronx did. And I hope that we will pass Intro 1044 to prevent that person and other people who are expelled from the council from ever accessing matching funds. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else? Is there anyone else? I'll now call on Speaker Adrian Adams to close out today's meeting.
Thank you, Majority Leader. The stated meeting of May 11, 2023 is hereby adjourned. Thank you, Majority Leader.